Thank you all for being here this evening. I'll call the order for the Monday, April eighth, two thousand twenty-four school board meeting for the Southwestern City School Board to order. Roll call.
Mrs. D'Angelo Steele.
Here.
Ms. Liskini.
Here.
Ms. Martindale.
Here.
Mrs. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Bosso.
Here. Next on the agenda will be the adoption of the agenda. The Director of Education approved the agenda for the April eighth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting. Make a motion.
I'd like to amend the agenda.
Go ahead, Mrs. D'Angelo.
I'd like to remove Holly Gilbert's name from section K one of the agenda.
Section K, K one or K two of the agenda, I think it is, if that's correct.
Or with the superintendent cert, that's K twelve, K one. Sorry, that's my fault. Yeah, me too.
Okay, it'll be K two of the agenda. We'd like to remove Holly Gilbert out of the list of the section of K two. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Second. Mrs. Liskini, can I get a roll call, please?
Mrs. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Liskini.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale. Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes. Any more additions or corrections to the agenda? All right. Do I get a motion to adopt it? Can I do that?
I make the motion.
Mrs. Peterson, can I get a second, please?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Angelo, thank you. Roll call.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Liskini.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes. The next is the approval of the minutes for the March eleventh, March twentieth, and April first meetings as attached. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes, please? Mrs. Martindale, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Liskini, thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Ms. Liskini.
Yes.
Mrs. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes. Tonight, we've got two presentations. We've got staff development and English learners. The first, we'll have Mrs. Wabowski, Coordinator for Staff Development. Erin.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, President Bosso, Vice President Martindale, members of the board, Dr. Wise and Mr. Garciide. And thank you for this opportunity to share some of the many valuable learning opportunities that have been made available to our district staff. Before we get to the optional learning that district staff can choose to attend, I would first like to share with you the required trainings that must be completed by staff. You'll take a look at the slide. In the top portion here, you can see the training that is required of all employees. The bottom portion outlines the additional training required to certificated and administrative employees. Many of these trainings are required yearly, while others are on a two- or five-year rotation. I share this information with you to highlight and to celebrate that in addition to these required trainings, we have a lot of staff choosing to dedicate their own time to further develop their knowledge and their skills. And at the same time, you can also see the incredible competition between their own time and requirements of their job. So let's take a look at some of the summer twenty twenty-three highlights. As you can see here, during June Academy last summer, we had thirty-five professional learning opportunities made available, and four hundred and twenty-eight staff members chose to participate in those learning opportunities. In August Academy, we had seventy professional learning opportunities made available, with three hundred and eighty-eight staff members participating. Overall, we were able to offer one hundred and five professional learning opportunities, and this equates to three hundred and nineteen point three five hours of learning, and eight hundred and sixteen staff members who chose to participate during non-instruct. In reviewing the historical attendance data for summer academy sessions, the largest number of participants can be found selecting literacy, math, or technology-focused professional learning opportunities. This work continues throughout the year with our content specialists and our coaching community. During the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, our focus on reading and writing continued with our literacy coach collaboration led by District Literacy Trainer Jackie Wisman, who provides learning support for building literacy coaches. Literacy Support Professional Development led by Literacy Support Teacher Leader Leslie McFane, who provides learning opportunities for literacy support teachers in the elementary buildings. Several of our elementary schools have also been participating in professional inquiry cycles led by Jackie Wisman and Leslie McFane. And this work further engages teachers in examining student data and refining teaching practices. Our K twelve EL grade level teams led by District EL Literacy Coach Kelly Schreeter and District EL Specialist Andrea Galoney continue their focus on foundational word study skills and oral language development. Our gifted coordinator Stephanie Hall and Sherry Turner have also been providing learning opportunities for our gifted service providers in grades K eight, focused on instructional strategies for lifting the rigor of literacy instruction. For our general education teachers in grades K eight, who are designated as providers, excuse me, of gifted services in order to meet the unique needs for students identified as gifted. And for our high school teachers, to introduce the gifted education competencies outlined in Ohio's operating standard for identifying and servicing students who are gifted. The K eight literacy coaches also continue to lead their building staff in unpacking standards, analyzing, and reflection on data, creating building action plans, staying up to date on state legislation. And now, summer will soon be here, and our work continues for professional development. Pending Board approval, summer literacy learning will be focused on the grades K four curriculum adoption, with learning opportunities provided by Houghton Mifflin Parkport Education Company, and the grades five and six curriculum adoption, with learning opportunities provided by American Reading Company, Poor Plus Morphe Magic. Under Section two six five point three three oh A two of House Bill thirty-three of the one hundred and thirty-fifth General Assembly, districts and schools shall require all teachers and administrators to complete a course provided by the Department of Education and workforce no later than June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. As a result, during the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year, literacy professional development will extend significantly outside of the school day, up to twenty-two hours for some educators. You'll have the opportunity to learn more about these requirements from Dr. Dan Gerard and Margaret Towery during future board presentation. Grades K one teachers will be receiving guided support from Curriculum Associates on the new Eye Ready Math Edition, launching in the fall of twenty twenty-four. And teachers of grades two through eight will have the opportunity to participate in an Eye Ready Math Refresher of the platform, as well as best instructional strategies, also led by Curriculum Associates. Behavior supports. Recognizing that student behaviors have changed immensely over time, we are currently collaborating with our special education department, school psychologists, social workers, and our district school partners to provide several learning opportunities to support staff in this area. This work has actually already begun with learning opportunities focused on Tier One Behavior Support, led by our Special Education Team and our Student Support Team staff. This team has started working with our bus drivers already, and has led a teacher training for district staff on April first PD Day. This work will be ongoing, and will continue with additional offerings in our June and August Academy for building administrators and the selected teams to attend, and also to attend an offering on OPEC Day targeted at our classified staff members. By providing this training to district staff, each building will have their own support team within their unique learning community, with a special education support team available for additional support if and when needed. Here you will see the early list of additional summer content learning opportunities. This list will continue to grow as we head into the month of May. Again, we will focus on some technology learning, and we are currently working to secure presenters for classes designed to further promote and develop strong instructional strategies, utilizing district-supported tools and resources. All technology learning opportunities will include components of digital wellness and safety. In addition to our content-focused classes, we will also be offering a variety of sessions that will provide new learning, helpful strategies, and resources to increase and support student and family sense of belonging. All sessions on this slide are designed to help support district focus of you belong here. Again, this will continue to grow as we move into May. The dates of our summer learning opportunities are provided on this slide. Once our summer catalog of course offerings is finalized, our department will share that catalog with each of you and invite you to attend anything that is of interest. And thank you. Are there any questions?
First and foremost, thank you very much. I had the opportunity of meeting with Erin and Allison last week, and they kind of shared some of these great things that they're doing with me, and they're just doing a fantastic job in providing opportunities for all of our staff, and I greatly appreciate that. I do have two questions. One is, do we, under your training, do we provide CPR?
CPR is in there. It's just not secured yet.
Okay.
Yes.
And is that your, that we do that?
We partner with Ohio Health, and we offer that every summer.
Okay. And then, the other question I had was, under your behavior supports, do we extend any of that training, behavior support training, to our aides?
Yes, they're included in the classified staff offering, so we'll be offering Tier One training on OPEC Day, which is October of next year, and that day is specifically focused on classified staff professional learning.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Erin, thank you so much. Next, we'll have English learner, Mr. Ed Kennedy, Coordinator of English Learners.
Good evening. President Bosso, Vice President Martindale, members of the board, Dr. Wise, Mr. Garciide. My name is Ed Kennedy. I'm the Coordinator of EL Services for Southwestern City Schools. I want to talk to you a little bit tonight about our English learner program. Well, the first slide, can't go back far enough to encapsulate where we are in nineteen ninety-three, ninety-four. I was here in the district on our first six identified ELs enrolled at Norton Middle School. We had some of them that enrolled at Westland High School. From those early days of six to ten students, we are currently, right now, we have three thousand eight hundred and sixteen identified English learners in our district at this point in time. You can see with the bar graph that those numbers have just grown consistently over time. So as we have increased the number of identified EL learners, we've really had to make some hard decisions as far as what's the best way to make sure that we're educating folks so that we're helping our students to acquire English language proficiency, but at the same time exposing them to the same rigorous academic content standards. In order to start that, we have in our district. So in addition to our thirty hundred identified ELs, we have another twenty-one hundred students who have exited our programs over the years. They started as EL students, they've exited by taking the OLBA assessment, they've exited the program, but there are still language needs that exist for the families of those students. And so, when we look at that, we have to make sure that we understand that if we're talking about twenty-five percent of our district that has a connection to the EL program, are we making sure that our programs are robust and do they satisfy the needs that we have? The additional piece that has been a complicator for us is, in these last three years, about fifty-three percent of our students who we've had enroll as new students in the district have come to us as a newcomer. And so, in order to meet the definition of a newcomer, there's usually one of two criteria the state of Ohio recognizes. Either it's the first or second year in U.S. schools, whether students who are performing at a beginner or pre-functional level on state assessments as far as English language proficiency. This year, that number is over fifty-six percent of our students. A lot of that is driven by the fact that, you know, the situation with Russia and the Ukraine has really created an influx of students for us from that part of Europe, that part of the world. And then, we've had an awful lot of immigration just from different parts of the world, where if there's something happening somewhere, there's a good chance that Southwestern City Schools and the state of Ohio are going to see immigrants. We're not the top primary location spot or relocation spot as far as immigrants coming into the United States. Columbus, Ohio, right now, is one of two primary re-relocations. So they'll start in San Francisco, or Minneapolis, or Indianapolis, and then Columbus is the place where a lot of families re-relocate to at some point in time. By the numbers, that number is very fluid. I'm going to say, right now, we have seventy-eight different languages and dialects, and we'll go up to eighty-one or eighty-two, sometimes it'll drop down to seventy-two or seventy-three because it is a fluid number. What really doesn't change for us is what's the makeup of those languages that are in our district. Spanish-speaking, seventy to seventy-one percent of our families and our students are Spanish-speaking. Right around twenty percent are Somali or Arabic. Hakacheen has held firm at three to five percent over the last several years. Ukrainian is the language that really is that outlier that's come in. We're currently, right now, about six percent of our EL population speaks Ukrainian, and that's a number that has continued to rise as we've moved through these last couple of years. The program goals of our EL department are the same EL program goals for any department in the state of Ohio. First, we want to make sure that our students attain English language proficiency. We need them to be proficient in English first, and so that is the primary focus of what we do. But then, we also have to make sure that we integrate language and content instruction. We want them to be exposed to the same rigorous academic content standards as any other student because, as they graduate, you know, our question has to be, what are we doing to prepare them for their future? What's your plan? And so, we really are big believers in that. That should be the focus of any EL program anywhere in the state of Ohio. So when we talk about second language acquisition, when we talk about English language proficiency, just one quick little overview thing here that I think helps people to a little better understand what we're trying to do with our kiddos every day. If we're talking about second language acquisition, all the research on second language acquisition says that a student or any person in the new country will acquire a second language in two steps. That first step is called BICS, Basic Interpersonal Communication Skills. And all that means is your ability to have a conversation with someone. It's oral language. All the research says that's typically one to three years it takes to develop that oral language, that interpersonal communication skill. The one that we have to better understand is CALCP, the Cognitive Academic Language Proficiency. For a lot of people who just began their work with English learners, what they don't understand at times, BICS will fool us into believing that a student is proficient in English, and they might be proficient in oral language, but the ability to do the things that you have to do to demonstrate knowledge, to read, to comprehend, to write, those are cognitive academic language proficiency skills. The research says that takes five to seven years. And so, the way we always look at that is, it's the iceberg. The one to three BICS is what you see above the waterline. The substantial part of the iceberg is what's below the waterline, and it's that academic language piece that we talk about working on so much. The great complicator in that is the research right now says, if we get students, eighth grade or higher, those students, their cognitive academic language time jumps up to seven to twelve years for them to acquire that language. And so, everything we do has to be about, how do we lessen that time? How do we get our kids to English language proficiency quicker? And they have to start with BICS, or they'll never get to CALCP. So we focus on what's your plan, and we love that. That's a district-wide focus that we look at, and so when we talk about it, we say, what is the literacy plan that we have for our kids? If we want to get our kids to English language proficiency, it's going to start with literacy. And so, for us, we say, our kids have to be problem solvers. They have to be able to persevere, and they have to be able to get themselves started, to keep themselves going. And so, everything we do, the EL, ELA proficiency standards are all based on ELA standards. And so, English language, English language arts standards are the foundational piece in the state of Ohio for the English learner, English language arts standards. And so, everything we do is standard-based. Our focus right now is, how do we use the information that we've picked up from the dyslexia legislation? How do we make sure that we leverage structured literacy? How do we provide levels of support for our students? And so, when we look at that, we really think that if we begin at a word-based initiation for our students, if we're really putting things in front of them that really help them at that most basic level, those are the things that move them quicker to English language proficiency. What we make sure our staff understands all the time is, it's got to be talking all the time. There has to be a lot of talking in those classes. And so, that's a little different when you walk into a TESOL class, we're teaching English language proficiency skills, or even in some content classes that are sheltered instruction classes, which I'll explain here in a moment, we'll hear a lot more conversation because we have to start with oral language to get our kids to more of that written language and comprehension. Again, we feel like all the training that we do in our district right now follows the state requirement as far as using the science of reading and structured literacy. We make sure that we are training our staff in best practices. What our staff has to do is, our staff has to understand, again, that relationship between oral language, BICS, and the cognitive academic language. And so, what you'll see with our staff is, there's an awful lot of focus on the intentional use of language every day as we work towards English language proficiency. In our classes, it looks like literacy instruction. In a lot of the classes, there will be some demonstration, there will be some practice together, and then that movement towards independence. And again, we feel like it's really that we do is the part where we spend an awful lot of time right now working on oral. Content support in our classes, especially grades five to twelve, one of the best parts about working in Southwestern City Schools, in the time that I've been fortunate enough to work here in the district, we support the daily English language proficiency, second language acquisition effort, of all of our students. And so, you know, years ago, when we heard that Oregon was doing something that really seemed to be moving in a good direction, and then down into Texas as far as using an English language proficiency focus in content classes, we had conversation with Dr. Wise years ago about believing that was something that could really help us, and he has been a great supporter and a great proponent of, what do we need to do to help our English learners and to help our families in the district? And so, if you go into all of our buildings at the intermediate through high school level, we'll find sheltered instruction classes where kids are sitting in a math, a science, or a social studies class. And in addition to that, those content standards there, on a daily basis, they're getting English language proficiency instruction as well, because we know it's not going to happen in one English language arts class a day. It has to happen for our students across the day. And so, those sheltered instruction classes have been very helpful in helping us to acquire that second language and move from BICS into CALCP. Because CALCP is where they're able to demonstrate knowledge on those state proficiency assessments. We're really, taking a look at it, in the last three years, we've had a great relationship with our Career Tech program. Our Career Tech folks came to us and said, our numbers show that we need more English learners enrolled, we need more English learners graduating from those programs, and we need more English learners working in the field in which they study. And so, really, what it gave us a chance to do was to sit down with our students, our families, and our staff and say, what does the world of work look like? What are the needs in the workforce today? What are things we need to try to offer? And so, we have been able to develop some really high-level programs that really help address needs for our English learners. So that next slide, our Medical Interpreter Program. The guy who ran the Medical Interpreter Program with us from Ohio State relocated to San Antonio, and so now, we're standing this program back up, we're reinforcing this program with a new partner from Ohio State. But that Medical Interpreter Program has been a great program for us. There was a clear understanding that particularly in the Somali and the Spanish-speaking communities, there was a need for someone to help explain medical terminology. And so, we have worked closely with Ohio State and closely with Ohio Health to make sure that we are giving students an opportunity to take advantage of their language skills, to demonstrate that it's not something you have to overcome, it's an asset that can really help the community that we live in. And then, we have partnered with Central New Mexico Community College to offer a customer service program and a bilingual customer service program, because Central Ohio has said to us, there's a great need for interpreters. We really need folks who can interpret, we need folks who can translate, and so we're trying to work closely with them. And then, Ohio State said, we can help you with the Spanish-speaking part. They've helped us to develop a heritage Spanish program, where a heritage language Spanish program, we don't take a kid who's already proficient in oral Spanish skills and put them in Spanish one like we used to do. They'll go to a heritage Spanish course, where they'll take their oral skills in Spanish, and they'll learn to read and write in Spanish. And so, that just makes them, it just better leverages their skills for the workforce once they graduate. We've taken visits here, there, and everywhere. They are an in-demand group because there are a lot of universities right now that are looking at them and saying, your language skills could help us here. And so, that's a group that we've been able to tour an awful lot of places and visit with an awful lot of folks as far as that post-high school education piece is concerned. Academic partnerships, again, we've already talked about, Central New Mexico, Ohio State, Ohio Health, those have been great programs for us to partner with, the Ohio State University Medical Program as well. Success stories, we have so many students who have been able to continue at the collegiate level with scholarships. You know, we have a young lady who just graduated from Harvard, who went to Harvard on full scholarship, who was a member of our EL program, Ohio State, Cincinnati, Dayton, OU. There's a ton of places, because again, if we can put those kids in opportunities to take advantage of their language skills, then universities have said, we could really use that support as well, and so it's been a positive thing for us. Non-academic supports, we partner with a whole host of English language support programs. In particular, Chris, the Somali Coalition, the Alubakar Asidik Islamic Center over on Sullivan has been a great partner for us in better understanding some cultural differences and helping us to better prepare to provide services for our students and supports for our families. And last year, the things we did was, we went down, Chris took a group of our students down, they did a couple of campus tours, just so students started thinking about what are opportunities after high school. And then, our supports for EL families, we are a great big believer in providing language supports for our families in our district. And so, again, we know what our four primary languages are, Spanish, Somali, Somali-Arabic, Hakacheen, and Ukrainian. We have bilingual assistants who work in the district. They work, they usually cover more than one building, but anytime we have a parent who needs a conversation, if it's a staff member who needs to contact a parent, if there's a document that needs to be translated, we have twenty-six in-house bilingual assistants who really help us manage all the language support needs for three thousand eight hundred sixteen kids and the twenty-one hundred kids who've exited on top of that. In addition to that, we contract with Marty. Marty is telephonic support, because at times, twenty-six VAs can't cover thirty buildings, and so at times, we'll use Marty to provide support as well. Every request that's made for language support, we attempt to provide that language support. Obscure languages sometimes take us a minute to find someone who can help us, but we really have been able to provide almost all requests for language support, and we go out of our way to make sure families know, if you need that support, let us know, we're here to help. We work with the Communications Department, it's wonderful. If we send out a message, if something needs to go out, they'll reach out to us, we'll get documents translated, we'll have interpreters help us explain things to families. It's been a wonderful relationship. So at that point in time, that pretty much covers the things that we do in the program as much as I can cover it in that amount of time, but if there are any questions, happy to answer them right now.
I don't have any questions. I just want to say, I always enjoy your presentation. I think it's so interesting to see how the district is moving forward and how quickly you have to move forward, but that's thanks to you. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Great job. Next, we're going to move on to board reports. One thing I kind of skipped over from you, I apologize. The board would like to make that statement, just with everything going on in the district lately. Come here.
Southwestern City Schools, staff, and community, the Board of Education would like to take a moment to address a recent post on the Southwestern City Schools website and all social media platforms on Friday, April fifth, twenty twenty-four, which may have caused offense due to the select verbiage that was used. We deeply regret any discomfort or confusion this may have caused. It was never our intention to assign blame for the closure of schools on Monday, April eighth, to any specific department. We understand that the wording used may have appeared divisive, and for that, we sincerely and directly apologize to the Transportation Department. We know the Transportation Department is a vital department for Southwestern City Schools. The decision to close schools today was due to an accumulation of anticipated staff absences across across the entire district and more than one department. Please know that we value the unity and the inclusivity of our community, and we are committed to fostering an environment where every member feels respected and heard. Once again, we extend our heartfelt apologies for any distress caused. Thank you for your understanding and continued support as we strive to serve the best interest of our district. President Bosso, I am requesting that this statement of apology be sent via email to all staff and posted on the Southwestern City Schools website and social media platforms to show our good faith in wanting to rectify this action that took place.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Can I get a motion to put that on our website?
So moved, Martindale.
So moved, Mrs. Martindale, can I get a second? Second, Mrs. DeAngelo. Angie. Roll call. Mrs. Martindale.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelo.
Yes.
Mrs. Liskini.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Bosso. Yes. Thank you so much, Camille. We're going to move on to public participation, participation related to agenda items. I see we have none. We'll move on to student and staff achievement liaison report with Mrs. Martindale.
Good evening, everyone. So I have a list of names to read here that makes me feel like I understand how the counselors feel on graduation. If I mispronounce any names, please forgive me. I'll attempt to be as quick as I can. Okay, so congratulations to the following Southwestern Career Academy students who have advanced to the next round of the BPA Skills USA and FCC LA competitions. Natalie Moica, Dionne Hightower, Tristan Sim, Bradley Kimball, Aiden Scott, Maria Rodriguez Cabrera, Saleh Adon, Christopher Erwin, Eris Broome, Joshua Carrillo, Juan Lopez, Jabari West, Myroslav Kohat, Robert Furman, Juan Lopez, Emily Martinez Herrera, Donatella Lopez Chavez, Aubrey Sock, Nasra Dahir, Schumara Valdez, Jenny Megana Figaroa, Magali Juarez Gonzalez, Evalia Garcia Mora, Danny Craig, Amira Love, Rosa Portillo, Cadence Cassidy, Mia Guateres, Mia Barilo, Charisma McKinney, Navia Barnhart, Elaine West, and Savannah McNerlin. So congratulations to all of these students and their achievements. And then finally, in terms of staff achievement, later this month, 58 staff honorees and 65 PTA volunteers and educators will be honored at our Board of Education hosted District Awards Gala, which is going to be April 23rd at 6:30 PM. We look forward to hosting these dedicated staff members and volunteers for a night of honoring educational excellence within our school system and to say thank you for all they do heading into May. And that wraps up my student and staff achievement report.
Thank you, Mrs. Martindale. We'll move on to items traction under fiscal and operational management with Mrs. Liskini.
Thank you. We have eight items for review this evening under fiscal and operational management. Number one is the revised permanent appropriations for fiscal year 2024. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the revised permanent appropriations for March 2024, CX1. Number two is investments and financial statements for March 2024. It is recommended that the Board of Education, in accordance with Section 135.14 of the Ohio Revised Code, approve March investments, CX2, and cash position reports, CX3. Number three is the payment of bills. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve payment of bills according to the list of checks for the month of March 2024, CX2. Number four is donations. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the donations of $6,241.43, as detailed in X5, and authorize letters of appreciation to be sent to the donors. Number five is authorization to pay bills in accordance with Section 5705.41 of the Ohio Revised Code. It is recommended that the Board of Education authorize the treasurer to pay bills for March, which were not processed in accordance with Section 5705.41 of the Ohio Revised Code, CX6. Sorry, settle in, everybody. Number six is agreement with Shakele Uniservice. It is recommended that the Board of Education enter into an agreement with Shakele Uniservice to participate in the group retrospective rating program for the January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025 rate year, CX7. Number seven is agreement with the Ohio Auditor of State's Office. It is recommended that the Board of Education enter into an agreement with the Ohio Auditor of State's Office to assist in the preparation of the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, at a cost not to exceed $23,800, CX8. And number eight, the resolution authorizing continued participation in the Ohio School Consortium Natural Gas Program. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the resolution and agreement as presented, CX9. After reviewing all of these items, I move for approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Liskini. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
Second, Mrs. Martindale. Roll call. Mrs. Liskini.
Yes.
Mrs. Martindale.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelo Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Yes. Next item for action is policy. I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. DeAngelo.
Yes. Items for action for policy, we have a second and final reading of new policies. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the second and final reading of the following policies, just transportation by vehicles other than buses. Question on that? Next, it's second and final reading of revised policies. We recommend that the Board of Education approve the second and final reading of the following revised policies, there are student assessment, academic intervention services, third grade reading guarantee, employment of substitutes, termination and resignation attendance, graduation requirements, animals on district property, student abuse and neglect, transportation, bus driver certification. And it is recommended that the Board approve these.
Thank you, Mrs. DeAngelo, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Peterson, can I get a roll call, please? Mrs. DeAngelo Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Liskini.
Yes.
Mrs. Martindale.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Yes. We're going to move on now to items for action under curriculum. We'll go back to Mrs. Liskini.
Thank you very much. We have two items this evening under curriculum. Number one is the recommendation for the 2024 summer programming. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following plans for the school year 2023, 2024 summer school programs. We have summer, the high school, summer school. Dates and times for teachers and students, June 4th through June 28th, 2024. No school on June 19th, and the teacher hours will be Monday through Friday, 7:45 AM to 12:45 PM for those 17 days. On June 4th, I want it to be noted that there will be a teacher meeting, and the time and location is to be determined. Students will attend June 5th through June 28th, 2024. Again, no school on June 19th. Student hours will be Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 12:30 PM for those 17 days. The locations will be Central Crossing High School and Grove City High School. Students will attend at Central Crossing High School. Westland High School students will attend at Westland High School, and Franklin Heights students will attend at Franklin Heights. All students taking health and PE will attend class at Central Crossing High School. And Southwestern Career Academy students will attend with their home school. Transportation is not provided. Also, summer graduation, Central Cross will be at Central Crossing High School on Thursday, August 15th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. And then end of course exams, the 2024 summer testing dates will be June 24th, 25th, 26th, and 27th. And the testing location will be at each high school. And the fee structure, this high school, summer school fees, grades nine through 12, there is no charge. Number two is the second and final reading of course of study instructional materials. It is requested that the Board of Education approve the second and final reading of the art course of study instructional materials, grades K-12, K-12, excuse me, as attached. And after reviewing these items, I move them for approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Liskini. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
Second, Mrs. Martindale. Roll call. Mrs. Liskini.
Yes.
Mrs. Martindale.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelo Steele. Peterson.
Yes.
Bosso. Yes. Moving on now to items traction under student, schools, and community with Mrs. Martindale.
Thank you, President Bosso. All right, I've got eight items for action tonight, so I'm going to go through them. I do that I normally do. I've got Beal Park Middle School students, which travel to Washington DC. That trip was taking place May 8th through the 10th of 2024. Little View Middle School students who travel to Washington DC. That trip is planned for May 22nd through the 25th of 2024. Franklin Heights High School marching band students to travel to Rio Grande, Ohio. That trip is planned for July 21st through the 26th, 2024. Grove City High School marching band students to travel to Millersburg, Ohio. That trip is planned for August 4th through the 9th of 2024. Grove City High School NJ ROTC marksmanship team to travel to Camp Perry, which is in Port Clinton, Ohio. That trip is planned for July 29th through August 2nd of 2024. Grove City High School Student Council to travel to the Ohio State University. That trip is scheduled for June 23rd through the 27th of 2024. Business Professionals of America students from Southwestern Career Academy to travel to Chicago, Illinois. That trip is scheduled for May 10th through the 14th of 2024. And finally, Westland High School AFJROTC to travel to Camp Wilson in Belle Fountain, Ohio. That trip is scheduled for June 3rd through the 5th of 2024. And I will say that all of these trip expenses are paid by fundraising, students, parents, with the exception of the Business Professionals of America is paid for by Career Technical Fund. So after reviewing all of these items for passage, I move to do so at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Martindale, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Liskini. Roll call. Smartdale.
Yes.
Mrs. Liskini.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelo Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Yes. Moving on now to items for action under certified resignations with Mrs. Peterson.
Okay. On the board agenda tonight, our eight personnel items involving 168 persons. We have 17 certificated resignations, 31 administrative employments, six certificated changes in employment status, 59 certificated employments, 19 classified resignations, 10 classified changes in employment status, 25 classified employment. One recommendation to direct the treasurer to issue a public notice regarding a retired, rehired employee. After reviewing these items, I move them for passage with the exclusion to the administrative list of Ms. Holly Gilbert.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson, can I get a second?
Okay.
Mrs. DeAngelo, thank you. Roll call. Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelo Steele.
Yes.
Liskini.
Yes.
Smartdale.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Yes. Now we're going to move on to public participation related to non-agenda items. The first person is Julie O'Brien.
Good evening. My name is Julia O'Brien, and I'm speaking tonight in support of our district's teachers, particularly our teachers who are part of the LGBT community. On June 26th, 2015, nearly nine years ago, the Supreme Court of the United States decided Obergefell v. Hodges, which required all states to grant same-sex couples the right to marry and to have their marriages recognized, even if they were from different states. This was a decision by a conservative majority court and gave full marriage equality to LGBT couples, which means that their marriages are equal in the eyes of the law to the marriages of heterosexual couples. Writing for the majority, Justice Anthony Kennedy emphasized that the fundamental right to marriage for all individuals, regardless of sexual orientation, was protected by the 14th Amendment of the United States Constitution. Yet, despite marriage equality being the law of the land for nearly nine years now, it seems that some in our community do not want to give our LGBT teachers the respect that they deserve. We still hear complaints about the mere existence of LGBT teachers and their families from some parents in this district. Somehow, these particular teachers are expected to hide who they are and who their families are, because some parents in the district don't like or don't approve of gay people or marriage equality. These parents are offended by the photos spouses on desks or even mere mentions of these teachers' families in the course of normal discussion. While no objection has ever been raised about our heterosexual teachers' families depicted in photos in their classrooms or brought up occasionally in the course of normal discussion, it is suddenly a big problem to these parents if a gay teacher engages in the same conduct as if the mere mention of the existence of a spouse in a same-sex marriage is somehow a threat to students. LGBT families are like any other families. They have kids and dogs and homes and extended families, and they face all of the same ups and downs in life that the rest of us do. They celebrate the welcoming of children into their families, the purchase of homes, and their educational and professional achievements. They go to ball games and on vacation, and they care for elderly parents. There is no logical or moral reason that they should be expected to adhere to a different set of rules for how they discuss their lives than any other teachers. No teacher should be expected to be a mindless robot that merely spews information at students. They are real people who must connect with students on a human level. That ability to form connections with students is part of what makes a teacher successful. So let's not ask our LGBT teachers to do anything different than we would of any other teacher. LGBT people, like all individuals, have the inherent right to exist and live freely without discrimination. Just as heterosexual individuals have the right to love, to pursue happiness, so do gay individuals. Denying them these rights is a form of unjust discrimination. Upholding equality and ensuring that everyone can exercise their rights without prejudice is fundamental to a just society. If this concept is difficult for anyone to understand, I would suggest just living your own life without attempts to denigrate the value of the lives of others. It is not necessary to understand all of the complexities we find in those different forms, but a just society requires that everyone accept the rights of others to live their lives as they see fit under the law. To our LGBT teachers, I want to make it clear that you have enormous support across the Southwestern City School community. There are a great many of us who are thrilled with the evolution of rights for the LGBT community. We celebrated the victory that Obergefell decision represented for you in rejoice in your status as citizens who are endowed with full rights. Please keep this support in mind as you navigate the complicated situations with which you are sometimes presented, and rest assured that we stand with you on the right side of history. Thank you.
Dr. Holly Gilbert.
Good evening, and thank you to the Board of Education for maintaining a public space of inquiry, debate, and communication. And thank you for most of you trying to use your microphones. It's very helpful for those of us in the audience. It is this public space about which I would like to talk about this evening. In the last election, we were promised radical transparency. And in the various meetings since our new board members were sworn in, transparency, radical or otherwise, has been lacking. I am familiar with the rules governing open and public meetings like these, Robert's Rules of Order. For those of you who are not, Robert's Rules is a handbook of agreed-upon procedures and rules that any group or organization can use to make sure decisions and discussions are orderly. It's been around since eighteen seventy-six and is used by our own Congress, state legislature, and most boards of education. The agenda, roll calls, and votes we see here are governed by Robert's Rules. Too often at these meetings, we simply hear a roll call vote or the mention of a first or second reading of a new policy. There is no discussion about how any board members understand these policies, disagree, or agree with. The only discussions that appear to take place to help board members make decisions might be in executive session, to which the only non-board member who gets insight is Mr. Tarazi. This is not transparency. Your actions make you appear as if you are a rubber stamp for whatever is on the agenda with no public discussion or participation. How are parents to engage? Do we seek you out individually on our own time? Do you plan to hold working or listening hours? Other boards of education have expanded public participation within Robert's Rules in order to increase parental and community involvement. For example, the Hilliard Board of Education allows for up to thirty minutes of public comments at every meeting, not just the first regular meeting. If individuals need more than the allotted three minutes, they can be added to the official agenda right there. Additionally, the amount of time participation can be increased by a vote of the board. There's no limit on topics, number of people per topic, and the board is flexible enough to increase discussion if necessary. Another example is Dublin City Schools. They allow for public participation at their business and other meetings. At their business meetings, any number of people can speak for three minutes each. There's no limit of individuals per topic like we have. Dublin allows for a full hour of participation during their work sessions once a month. According to their website, quote, "This public participation opportunity is conversational and allows a Q and A format. Participants can ask questions or comment on any subject or topic. In addition to Board of Education members, the superintendent and executive leadership team are present," end quote. It's this model I would urge our board to consider. We have seen recently how public comments can help you, the board, understand important issues and needs. For example, were not for someone mentioning the utility of a service animal at Westland High School, Ms. Steele would not have inquired about adding it such to agendas or policies that we voted on tonight. At the last special meeting, some of the public had questions about the procedures and means of decisions to be made by K twelve in our new superintendent search. It was really helpful to have that moment of clarification and education on the process. I urge our board to consider two different means for transparency and participation. First, I ask you at a minimum to discuss openly why or how you came to decisions before you vote. Robert's Rules allows for the board to discuss things, even if only to explain to the public what is being voted on and why it's important to our district. I understand personnel issues cannot be discussed in public, nor should they be. But what else is discussed back there that Sunshine laws cannot touch? If it's nothing nefarious, then tell us. Help the public understand your positions and decisions better. How else can we be more involved? How else can we decide for ourselves in which direction our district will go? Second, I urge the board to allow for more public participation at regular meetings, and if possible, consider a Q and A conversation added to quarterly meetings. For over two hundred years, our democracy has only grown and thrived on public participation. If our voices don't appear welcome here, they're not going to appear welcome at the P T A, the schools, or elsewhere in the community. You simply will not get more parents and community members involved without welcoming their input or making it easier. There is no reasonable obstacle to increasing transparency and public participation. You have a means to govern such discussions in Robert's Rules. You have peer districts already modeling transparent and inclusive behaviors with their communities. And above all, this is what was promised to us. There are more and more of us here at every meeting, and just remember that we are watching. Thank you.
Next will be Jim Dillon.
Thank you. I'd like to give a little bit of my background before I talk about. I have over forty years of aerospace program, subcontractors, contracts experience, including negotiations of hundreds of millions of dollars of public spending. With that said, the district has hired an attorney with no educational law experience and no educational contract law experience. None of it was listed on his resume prior to 2024. Please note that litigation is not contract negotiation. Why was this attorney hired? Did the bid reflect a requirement for an attorney with contract law negotiation or experience? The lack of contract negotiation and educational law experience reflects poor stewardship of public funds as well as lacking in transparency. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. Next, we have Jenny Spahn.
Good evening. I would like to discuss the district's transportation department first. If you recall, on March twelfth, 2023, our superintendent thought it would be a good idea to not pay our hard-working bus drivers for their extra routes. We only have what's referred to as an extra route because we cannot keep the bus drivers that we do have or the people that we invest weeks of time and money into training to be a bus driver because they leave for other districts that pay more. Our superintendent accepted our bus drivers to run their regular route, then run an additional route for free. Would you work for free? It took him a day, more or less, to figure out this was not going to work. He didn't care if it was okay to do this to an employee of our district or not, just that they weren't going to tolerate it and changed it back to pay our bus drivers for all the work that they do do. Things bring, this brings me to the past Friday situation. As a parent in the district, I was completely embarrassed that the superintendent chose not to collaborate with our board, teachers, and support staff to reach a decision that was best for our district as a whole. It was clear to surrounding school district superintendents, so why not ours? It's my understanding that there is a system called A S O P. This system crashed Friday with the number of calls, number of call-offs it received. A S O P is not utilized by our bus drivers. So to confirm, our bus drivers did not call off in Groves on Friday for Monday, and they most certainly did not advise that they would drive our students to school on Monday morning but would not return to drive them home safely. Schools, school was canceled today because it should have been canceled months ago by the superintendent. Can we please stop the superintendent from taking our transportation department for granted and stop publicly blaming them for things that are clearly not their fault? As with anything or anyone, you treat them badly long enough, they will go elsewhere, and unfortunately, that has been happening more so than not. I'm sure that the staff in this district appreciate the formal apology, but at the same time, can we just please stop creating situations that require an apology? Let's try something called accountability. It's not always easy, but it's necessary, just like change, completely necessary, which brings me to my next topic. There is a lot of misinformation currently circulating regarding our district. The Southwestern City School District is our school board of education, and our school board is the district. It's one and the same. They are not separate. So referring to board policy, it initially states, "Policy number one seven four for school attorneys. The Southwestern City School Board of Education may employ legal counsel as necessary and pay for legal services from school funds." Board policy does not authorize our superintendent to hire lawyers as he decides and spend our district's money, our students' money, without a board vote. The community even thinks that we're having super-secret meetings, and they're being held by the Board of Education. How can it be a secret meeting if it's clearly posted publicly prior to the meeting? The public is even welcome to attend. It's even posted on YouTube for everyone to view and listen to when it's convenient for them. So these recent meetings being held by our very own Board of Education are anything but secret. Are these meetings completely out of character for our Board of Education? Yes, they are. This is nothing like we've seen before. Why? Because this board understands that all things involving this district, our staff, and most importantly, our students must operate according to board policy, or it's not legal. Our previous majority board and our superintendent made countless decisions without the knowledge of the public outside of executive sessions. That is why the community is so confused by the executive sessions we've had. They don't understand that is how school board districts operate according to board policy. This is how it should have always been conducted, but now everyone knows it wasn't. As a parent, I have never been okay with superintendent personally requesting a lawyer be involved with Lexi's neglect of use in each and every single I E P and I E P attended meeting. Nicole Tyne and Janet Ammon both have called and texted Melissa Bondi personally to request her attendance in Lexi's meetings. Because I have previously requested information on legal fees in this district, I do not want a response necessarily with just a number. I want the full information because on October twentieth, 2023, I sent a request for legal fees in this district dated back to January first, 2020. No response. I sent a follow-up email on October twenty-seventh, 2023, requested a minimize record request starting August twenty-two. No response. Thank you.
Now, before we move to adjournment, I just want everybody to know here, there's not one board member that sits on this desk up here that if you get ahold of in an email, phone call, my number's on there, that wouldn't get back with you with anything that you would like to talk about. And if they wouldn't, I hope somebody lets me know because I just, we're not, we're not a board like that. We want to talk to people. Our number's there, at least mine is. Not everybody has their phone number on there, but if you email, they will get back to you to discuss anything you would like to discuss. I just wanted to make that statement. Anybody else have anything to say? Thank you. Now we're going to go ahead and move to adjournment. A direct commitment, Board of Education meeting be adjourned. Can I get a?
Come on.
Thank you, Mrs. Martindale. Can I get a second?
Second.